For the April 22, 2019 Regular Business Meeting of the Wayne'sboro City Council. Mr. Allen, would you mind please leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To remind those in attendance this evening, if you'd like to speak either during the public comment period or during a public hearing, that there are forms in the back that we'd ask that you kindly sign up for. And then just to the size of the audience this evening, I'll go and repeat it once now and then later. We've got our little stoplight up here, green means go, and then yellow to sort of wrap up your thoughts, and then red to please, to end your statements, only so that we can get as many people to speak as possible. I respect everyone's time. So the first order of business this evening is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, 5-0, thank you. Third item this evening is matters from council members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share this evening?
Mayor Short.
Yes.
I just wanted to announce again, the first Tuesday of the month, I have an open meeting over at the French Press at nine o'clock in the morning. So that is going to be May the 7th will be the first Tuesday in May. So I look forward to seeing people there.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone else? Great, great, thank you. Moving on to number four is to conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the effective tax rate increase associated with the increase in real property values resulting from the general reassessment. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think you're well aware that the city assessor's office recently completed the 2019 general reassessment for the city. The Code of Virginia requires that all properties within the locality be assessed at 100% of their fair market value. In other words, it is the task of the assessor to evaluate each property as if it were exposed to the real estate market. And she does that by taking that property and trying to compare it to comparable properties in a similar vicinity to the property. She tries to look at for each property at three comparable sales. The total assessed value of real property as of the date of the advertisement of the effective tax increase is equal to a bit more than $1.8 billion, which is more than a 7% increase over the previous reassessment. As, again, as a requirement of the Virginia Code, then we're required to advertise a rate that would equalize the real estate tax revenue of the city. In other words, what, how would you have to adjust the real estate rate to collect the same volume of revenue that the city currently collects at 90 cent tax rate? So the, what would be referred then to the equalized tax rate, that is, the rate per $100 of assessed value, would be 85 cents. The city has advertised, again, the current tax rate of 90 cents. The council must hold a public hearing on the reassessment. In addition, at a subsequent council meeting, the May 13th meeting, the council will also hold a public hearing on budget and all tax rates, including real estate and utility rates and so forth. So tonight's public hearing is simply to take public input on the reassessment itself, that is, the, the increase in value that, that creates an increase in tax revenue for the city and would have an effective tax rate going from 90 cents down to 85 cents.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Shaw?
So we're not setting a 90 cent tax rate, we're just saying what we would do if we equalized, which would go down to 85, and then if we brought it back to where it is, where we thought it was going to be at, it'd be back to 90 cents where the tax rate is now, correct?
That is correct. That tonight, the council will not introduce an ordinance to set the tax rate. We're simply hearing comment on the, the equalized tax rate. However, to be clear, the city has advertised a 90 cent tax rate, that is, the current real estate tax rate, that is, 90 cents per $100 of real estate value. And that is the tax rate upon which the city manager's budget is constructed. And so it would be, the staff will bring an ordinance to council at its next meeting that would be available for introduction at a 90 cents tax rate unless otherwise directed.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Hamp, do we have?
Yes, sir, we do. Mr. C.R. Barrett, followed by Mr. Ken Adams.
Thank you. Oops, I'm sorry.
I'm Mr. C.R. Barrett.
Hi. Ms. Barrett, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
C.R. Barrett, 401 Ridge Circle. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I've obviously come to speak about the real estate tax rates. I've provided you a short packet, which I'm sure you're already familiar with, but I wanted to highlight to you what our tax rate is compared to the tax rates of some of the surrounding areas to Wayne'sboro. And so I've provided that to you on page one. And you can see that Wayne'sboro is higher than Harrisonburg City, and it's higher than most of the counties. It's a little bit lower than Stanton City. And so my, my point to you is, page two also shows you what the historical real estate tax rates have been over what corresponding time period. And my point is that you are the custodians of our money, and I realize that the city has bills, we all do. We need to be able to afford the tax increases that you pass along in your budget, the budget that the, I guess, the city manager has put together at your direction, indicates that we will be increasing our budget approximately 15% overall. You've indicated that we have increases in utilities taxes that you want to pass through. You want to also increase personal property taxes, and you want to incur, increase the real estate taxes and other taxes. So all told, we're not looking at an isolated tax increase. You're asking the citizens of Wayne'sboro to put this on their backs, a lot of them are fixed income individuals. We have a mixed group of people that live in Wayne'sboro, and I speak for those that are well off as, as well as those that are less fortunate and on fixed incomes. And you're asking us to take a lot of extra money and fork over for taxes so that you can do your capital improvements and you can pass through some increases in teacher salaries as well as city workers. I think we would all agree, those are noble goals. I ask you as a city council to prioritize what you are doing with our money. You've committed us to millions and millions and millions of dollars with a new high school. And so I think some of the capital projects that you want to do with our money should wait. I think that you need to reconsider increasing the tax rate back up to 90. The rate at 85 would bring in the same exact amount of income that we are currently operating on. I don't think that 90 is something that you should go all the way up to. And I would ask you to consider that, take a look at the surrounding areas, because we are not the lowest in the area. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Following, Ken Adams will be Bill Krastik.
Mr. Adams, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record and address?
Good evening. My name is Ken Adams. I am the chairman of the Wayne'sboro Republican Committee, and I speak to you this evening in my official capacity as the chairman of that committee. Last Thursday evening, the Wayne'sboro Republican Committee met and voted unanimously to oppose any increase in the real estate tax rate up to 90 cents. The reason the committee voted that way is last year, the council increased taxes 7 cents or 8.4%. To increase the tax rate from the 85 now back to 90 represents another increase of 5.9%, which is a two-year total of 14.3%. That's 14.3%. And the annual inflation rate in the United States today is 1.9%. So the two-year inflation rate in the United States is 3.8%. The increase that's being considered perhaps by the city council compares with that 3.8% at 14.3%. And the members of the Wayne'sboro Republican Committee feels that is, in a word, predatory. It is just far beyond the 3.8% of inflation increase, and it does great harm, especially great harm, to people who have difficulty making ends meet. Wayne'sboro has a wonderful population, it has a diverse population. Some elements of our community can easily digest a 14% increase over two years. But there's many of us here in Wayne'sboro that will have difficulty. And, and the Wayne'sboro Republican Committee feels that it's just unwise and inappropriate to have a 14.3 predatory property tax increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Following, Mr. Krastik will be Louis Price.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
How's that? Good evening, my name is Bill Krastik, 1321 Hollands Road. I come before council to provide information and express my concern over the proposed tax rate for 2019. From the book Politics and People, written by former Wayne'sboro Mayor Frank Lucin, whom I honestly did not know was here this evening, and it also is available on Amazon for $19.98, he wrote on page 239 that for each penny of the real estate assessment, the result is a revenue increase to the city of $173,000. Former Mayor Lucin also wrote that in 2016, the city had an additional $1 million annually in revenue thanks to the town center being paid off. Using Mr. Lucin's figures, this should equate to 5.78 cents of the real estate tax rate. In addition, Mr. Lucin also pointed out that the new stormwater fee added another $750,000 of revenue to the city, or the equivalent of 4.34 cents per tax rate. If you add these two revenue streams together, they total 10.12 cents. Did our real estate property tax go down as a result of this additional revenue? No. Instead, between 2016 and 2018, the city's real estate tax rate increased 10 cents and went from 80 to 90 cents. To provide a bit of perspective, while the U.S. Cost of Living Index, or COLA, is 10.7% for the period of 2014 to 2019, my personal real estate has increased taxes 31.01% during the same period using the proposed 90 cent real estate property tax rate. Whether council wants to admit this or not, this is pretty excessive by any standard, especially if you're on a fixed income. I would recommend that council review the revenue stream increases as well as expenses from 2016 until the present, and come back to the citizens of Wayne'sboro with a property tax rate that truly reflects the current state of our local economy. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments.
After Mr. Price, Ms. Chanda McGuffin.
Mr. Price, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Louis Price, 716, no, 640 Maple.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm very interested in my taxes. I don't know all these numbers that they do, but most of you have gotten a paper that I had, a gift to somebody that he was, okay. And my taxes in places went up to 65% in one house. And that's a house, I think it was 65, that house was 50 years old, been added on three years, three different times. It's just not that kind of a house, but to say, well, others in that area are getting that. That on this paper is 456 Cherry. They reduced it a little bit when I complained the first time, but it's still, it's not right. If you look down at those numbers that I've got, and if you understand that little paper I worked up, the first, where I have a line coming out to 12%, then to 15, then to 18. And see, I've got them on up, well, on Cherry. That's the one that was built in 1900. That house, it's the same square footage, is not like one of the others are that's that square footage. I've done things to keep my rent up, like putting in carpet, or putting in air conditioning, and it's still, to get a decent rent out of it. But somebody, some way ought to be able to talk to the people down there, I can't. I like the assessor, but that ain't what counts in my, in my pocketbook. I don't know of anything else I've got to tell you. Well, I don't know of anything else, I'm not a presenter like these others are.
Okay, we appreciate your comments, thank you.
Following, Ms. McGuffin, Milton and Judy Samora.
Ms. McGuffin, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Chanda McGuffin, 644 Wardian Lane, Wayne'sboro. My concern is, if we don't increase at the 90 percent, or stay there, the negative impact that will happen with the funds that we won't have. I don't like taxes either. No one likes taxes. We don't want to hear taxes raised. We, we want it low. However, this is kind of how we've gotten into this situation. Capital improvements have kept being kicked down the road, and kicked down the road. That's how we have the high school in the shape that it's in, that's how we have the roads that are here. And I know roster has been paved 1,000 times, I see it on Facebook. Why are we repaving roster? Well, we got some other roads that need paving in Wayne'sboro. And we, we've got to figure out a way that, no, we don't want to keep increasing taxes, but we don't want to hurt ourselves in the plan that has been developed and designed by the folks who lead the city. And they have a tough job. I appreciate what you're doing. I see what you're doing. And I think that it'll be counterproductive for us to go lower, because it's going to hurt us in the long run. It's going to hurt to go to the 90, but it's going to hurt us in the long run to stay at 85% and lose that revenue. So I, I support the 90, 90 cents.
Thank you, Ms. McGuffin.
Following, the Samoras will be Gary Wade.
I apologize, we signed in on the wrong form, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we'll do Mr. Wade, and then Ms. Diana Williams.
Mr. Wade, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Gary Wade, I live at 1200 Boxwood Circle in the city. I started out to come tonight, and then I had a couple of friends call me and tell me what was going on, and it's been very interesting. But I'm, I'm sobered to hear the, the changes in the rates that Mr. Adams explained. I don't know if anyone will speak later to, or corroborate that, or deny it, but certainly we have lots of things to do in the city, but yet we must budget ourselves and spend according to our means. When the rate of inflation is 3% over two years, and we're discussing budgeting a 14, 15% increase in spending, and therefore taxes, it, it sobered one up. So I'd just ask your deep consideration of what you do. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for being here.
Ms. Williams, followed by Mr. Peter Van Acker.
Ms. Williams, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Diana Williams, 185 South Delphine Avenue. So thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening. And I found that I was going to end up echoing a lot of what Ms. McGuffin has already said. I support the 90 cent rate increase, not just as a resident, and not just as a school boarder, school board member, but also as a member of the Comprehensive Planning Committee. So what I'm going to do now is just, I'm just going to read some of the values that, as, as a group and as a council used to do, is supported in this plan. So Wayne'sboro residents and business owners are a community with shared values. Five are especially important, and this is taken directly from pages 18 and 19 of the plan. So Wayne'sboro will catch up and keep up where needed, and Wayne'sboro will not saddle future generations with catch-up expenses that make keeping up and getting ahead impossible. And I think this is really at the root of what we're trying to do right now, and this was under our shared value of being prudent, being family-friendly. Wayne'sboro will put the future of our children at the top of our agenda. Wayne'sboro will not tolerate unsafe conditions in our neighborhoods and housing where children cannot possibly succeed, nor will we accept a lack of progress in our schools. And you might not know this, but at the end of 2017, I actually delivered meals to some of the children and the family members of Winona. And where some of our children and families are living within this city is deplorable. There were places that I literally said, I would not leave my dog here, and people are raising their children in these conditions. And we said as a community, we wouldn't tolerate this. Entrepreneurial. Wayne'sboro will invest in projects that improve residential quality of life and grow the community's capacity to stimulate demand to invest in Wayne'sboro. Wayne'sboro will not sit on the sidelines while neighboring communities move ahead. So while it's relevant to see what the county's tax rate is at, and you know, what the city is our, we need to figure out what's best for us and, and stay in pace with what our neighboring communities are doing. Independent. Wayne'sboro will leverage its ingenuity to seize opportunities and address challenges. Wayne'sboro will not look to Washington or Richmond to fix its problems. And you see a lot of these comments, you know, especially on social media about, this thing didn't happen in Washington, and this didn't happen in Richmond, and this impacts us. But this type of behavior has been going on for years, and we committed to ourselves, to each other, to be different. And finally, pride of place. Wayne'sboro will respect its place and will be champions of the, will be champion environmental stewardships based on a land ethic. And Wayne'sboro will not make decisions solely on the basis of economic self-interest, but in consideration of integrity, stability, and beauty of Wayne'sboro's natural setting. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams, for being here.
So following, Mr. Van Acker, Ms. Kristy Williams.
Mr. Van Acker, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Peter Van Acker, 708 Maple Avenue. And I was, I wish, I was as eloquent as you, thank you very much. But I, what I want to say is, catch up, keep up, and get ahead. And I think that is an excellent mantra for the city moving forward. One of the reasons our water rates are so outrageously high is because that system was left to rot and fall apart, and there was no planning put into that. So we now are paying the price for those decisions. For years, Wayne'sboro wanted to be the lowest taxed community in the valley, and I, I believe we achieved that goal. Meanwhile, our water systems, our schools, our roads, and our community at large was falling apart. It is a tough decision to raise taxes, but you have to be responsible to the entire community. I think Wayne'sboro does have a program that permits adjustments for folks who are having a hard time affording their taxes. But I can tell you, and you know as well as I, that people leave town because they don't want their kids to go to school in Wayne'sboro. And there's a cost for that. And I'd ask all of you to assess that and, and make a responsible decision for our community. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Mr. Van Acker. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Kristy Williams at 400 Pelham Drive. And Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for listening to my comments today. I was a bit more organized to start, but upon listening to some other comments from some fellow residents, I just have a couple of things to say about the proposed tax increase, or to keep it at 90%. And this is my first time talking to a city council, so bear with me, I may get a little bit nervous.
Doing great, doing great.
But upon what somebody else had said earlier, to prioritize what you are doing with our money, that is your guys', we trust you guys to do that, and I believe that you all are doing that to the best of your ability. I believe that the tax rates going as low as they were, down to 70 cents back in 2007, 2010, have put our city in a position to where we do need to catch up, before we can even keep up or get ahead. We, we have a catch-up to do, and there's not much sense in looking back at the past. I am geared at looking towards right now and having a better future for our children. So I come as a parent of a seven-year-old and a two-year-old, and my friends often say to me, if the schools don't get where they need to be, we're moving to Augusta County or to Stanton or to Charlottesville. That breaks my heart. We have good teachers, we have great schools, we have great teachers, we have great students. And it's a shame that some of those folks will be leaving because they don't feel like our schools are properly funded. And in the same regard...
And in the same regards, it breaks my heart to learn about our police officers for not getting the proper compensation and our city employees that are not getting the proper compensation. I don't like tax increases any more than anybody else, but what I do believe in is the city of Waynesboro, and I believe that we can do better for the people in this city. And to the first start to that is to, I approve this, I support this tax increase to 90 cents. I think it's the first step in our city getting back to where they need to be so that we can finally move forward. And just as a side note as well, I would like to mention the teacher compensations, which have become the forefront of a lot of conversations in my household. Since 2014, Stanton teachers have given their teachers a total of 18 percent salary increases. Augusta County has given their teachers 16.9 percent salary increases. And Waynesboro, since 2014, has given their teachers a 9.7 percent increase. And we wonder why teachers are living in Waynesboro and driving to these other school districts to work. It's because our teachers aren't getting compensated the way they should. And we're a great city. We have great teachers, so let's make sure that we can keep them here. So thank you all for everything that you do, and I support this tax increase.
Great. Thank you very much.
That's it.
Then I will close the public hearing. Thank you all for joining us this evening. All right. Item five is to schedule a public hearing for May 13, 2019, to receive comment on the proposed tax rates for land lots, tangible personal property, machinery and tools, and other property. Mr. Hamm?
Mayor Short and members of council, the next three items, and for the benefit of those in attendance and the listening public, are simply to set and confirm public hearings on the content of the budget. The first one deals with the revenue generation aspect of the budget. The second deals with utility rate revenue generation. And then finally, the third public hearing to set and confirm for this evening relates to the budget in total with consideration given to the expenditure aspect. So item number five deals with the tax rate, and it is my recommendation that the council approve notice or confirm notice to conduct a public hearing on May 13 regarding the various tax rates that underpinned the city manager's recommended budget. Those rates, I would recommend that the council advertise are 90 cents for real estate, $3.25 for personal property, and $3.25 for machinery and tools. Now, the machinery, tools, and personal property bears some additional explanation. The Code of Virginia requires that motor vehicles, personal property, business personal property must be taxed at the same rate. The code further requires that the commissioners of revenue across the Commonwealth must assess property at 100 percent of market value. Historically, in our community, the city has advertised and billed at a rate of $5 per $100 of value. However, commissioners have historically assessed property at 50 percent of the market value for motor vehicles, which produced an effective tax rate on the motor vehicles for individual non-business taxpayers of $2.50. The recommended rate of 3.25 facilitates the ability to bring our practice and those rates into conformity with the now-known method of assessment. The commissioner communicates her intent to assess in full conformity with the code. And so by advertising 3.25 as the rate, that will achieve all of the stated objectives of the city manager's budget and meet the code requirements in the Commonwealth. As we remind councils each year, once you advertise a rate, you can go down, but you can't go up. And so in the case of the real estate and the personal property and the business personal property machinery and tools, you could adopt at the advertised rate, or you could determine to lower. So that's, it sets up that discussion for the public hearings. So again, in summary, this item, request that council set the public hearing, authorizing staff to advertise the public hearing for May 13 at the rates that I've just explained. And you can do that by motion and a second.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hamm? Is there a motion to set the public hearing for May 13?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So the public hearing is hereby set for May the 13th. Item number six is to schedule a public hearing for May 13, 2019, to receive comment on the proposed utility rates, water, sewer, and stormwater. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, much as the last item on your agenda, this item is simply to, for the council to set a public hearing for May 13 on the utility rates. In 2017, the engineering group of Thompson and Litten conducted a rate study for the city's water and sewer programs. The rate study is meant to project costs for debt, capital improvements, and operational expenses in the water and sewer systems in order to provide safe and reliable service and to meet regulatory obligations in those systems. And the rate study projected five-year schedule of rates for the water and sewer system. And we're in the third year of that study. We do revisit the rate study on an annual basis just to test its efficacy. This year, the rates are proposed to increase by 1.1 percent in both water and sewer systems. This past year, Wiley Wilson Engineering Group conducted a rate study for the stormwater program and established that the necessary operational regulatory demands, capital demands of the fund would require that the rate be increased from $3.42 per month for equivalent residential unit to $3.96 per month for equivalent residential unit. The equivalent residential unit, or ERU, is a measure that has a financial measure equivalent to 1,600 square feet. So if you live in a single-family home, and your home is between 1,200 and 3,000 square feet, which is the most common size in Waynesboro, your monthly fee is currently $3.42. It would be proposed to go to $3.96 per month. If you live in a smaller home, then the rate is $1.90, $1.71 per month, and it would be proposed to go to $1.98 per month. If you live in a home that's larger than 3,200 square feet, then the current rate is $6.84, and it would go to $7.92. If you live or own a non-residential property, then the property's impervious surface, that is all pavement, rooftops, any area that water can't penetrate through the surface, is divided by 1,600 square feet, that is the equivalent residential unit. And that number is then multiplied by $3.42 currently. In the proposed budget, it would go to $3.96. Again, the task for the council tonight is simply to establish a public hearing for Monday, May 13, I believe that date is.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Shaw? All right. Is there a motion to set the public hearing for May the 13?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is hereby set for May the 13th. Number seven is to schedule a public hearing for May the 13 to receive a comment, to receive comment on the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. Mr. Hamm?
I don't think it requires any additional explanation at this point.
Thank you. Is there a motion to set the public hearing for May the 13?
I'll make the motion.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So May the 13th, folks. May the 13th, the date. Item number eight is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing staff to initiate the process of requesting the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation to designate a portion of the South River as a Virginia Scenic River. Mr. Hamm?
We'll call Mr. Jones to explain the benefits of the Scenic River designation.
Mr. Jones, if you could state your... I'm only teasing you.
Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to be here, and yet another chapter of the fantastic resource we have just down the hill, the South River. The intent of the Virginia Scenic Rivers Program is to identify, recognize, and provide a level of protection to rivers with significant scenic historic recreational and natural values. The state is celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Scenic Rivers Program in 2020, and so we are trying to sort of get ahead of that and be recognized as one of those communities with a Scenic River designation in the year 2020. The step that you have for you tonight is simply to allow DCR to come into, which is the Department of Conservation and Recreation. They would come and evaluate the five-mile stretch that we're proposing as part of that, and they look at about 14 different criteria to see if we qualify. So that's really the step tonight, and if we would qualify, they would come back and city council would pass a resolution supporting the Scenic River designation.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jones? Great. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine is to consider introducing an ordinance amending the city code, repealing Chapter 50, Section 10, fingerprinting applicants for concealed handgun permits of the city code of Waynesboro, Virginia. Mr. Hamm?
Mayor Short, members of council, this is largely a housekeeping item. Until 2012, the Code of Virginia allowed that localities, at their discretion, could adopt ordinances requiring that applicants for concealed weapons go through a fingerprinting process as part of the background check and vetting of their application. In 2012, the Code of Virginia was amended, repealing or removing the provision, and while our practice in Waynesboro changed, we stopped fingerprinting individuals making an application for concealed weapons. We never took the opportunity, or the council was never prompted, to correct our local code. And so it's appropriate at this time, as our attorney, Ms. Michelson, points out, to bring our local code into compliance with the Code of Virginia.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make it.
Great. Thank you. Any ordinance introduced this evening will be brought forward at our very busy May 13 regular scheduled business meeting. Next is communication correspondence and calendar.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Great. Thank you. Next is citizen comment period. Do we have anyone that's signed up this evening?
We do. Three individuals have signed up with the topic of taxes. Bill Krastek.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address again for the record, please?
Good evening. I'm still Bill Krastek from 1321 Hollands Road in Waynesboro. There are at least two items I'd like to comment on. This was not all taxes. It has to be tax-related. I thought that was the other talk. Anything, right?
Yeah, anything that you'd like to talk about, yeah.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. The first item regards the traffic light located at the intersection of Wendy Grove Drive and Rossar Ave as you're coming from the Home Depot or Home Depot. From my experience, and I've timed this many times on different days, the light turns green and remains so for only a period of 10 seconds. This is far too short, in my opinion, especially when you consider the traffic from Wendy's, Exxon, Silk Road, Days Inn, Holiday Inn, Comfort Inn, Residence Inn, Outback, Plaza Esteca, Home Depot, and 146 apartments at Wendy Grove, which have so many cars they have to park on the street because they don't have enough spaces for, let alone the residence of Brandon Farms neighborhood. 10 seconds is really just not enough. Lord help you if you're trying to leave the Exxon station or sitting behind a tractor trailer that just left the Home Depot. You'll be there for a while. I would appreciate it if you could have someone address this and perhaps extend the time to at least 20 seconds. Thank you. The second item, and I wasn't sure when to bring this up, but I thought, well, this is the catch-all, I'd like to comment, is the Waynesboro school system and their funding from the city. As some of you may know, I am a former teacher of Augusta County and a retiree of the Waynesboro school system, so I have a little experience there. Years ago, I remember that a member of council sat in or participated in school board meetings. I do not know if that is still a practice of council. According to Mr. Lucens's book, sorry, I'm referencing that again, the school system is the city's largest expense. If this is true, then a sizable amount of the city's budget comes from our property taxes. I have read the numerous newspaper columns and letters to the editor and have a few questions. Number one, why is the Waynesboro school system offering up to $3,600 to teachers to retire as an incentive? I thought that I had read that Waynesboro's having difficulty recruiting teachers. Then why would you want to lose the experienced teachers by creating an incentive? By the way, according to their website, this is Augusta County in Waynesboro, there is only an $8 difference in the teacher's starting salary between Augusta County and Waynesboro. Unfortunately, getting into my car to come here, I found someone had broken in and taken about that much from my car, which was my coffee money generally, so anyway. Apparently, that is important to some people. In addition, why does the Waynesboro school system also offer teachers to retire under the age of 65 an additional $4,200 per year towards their medical insurance as an incentive? Let's look at this possible scenario, and this is just for one person. I have no idea the number of previous retirees that are currently receiving this incentive. If a teacher decides to retire at age 30, 55, excuse me, with 30 years of service, not only would they receive their full pension, lifetime life insurance, and lifetime medical subsidies for the VRS, the Waynesboro schools would also cumulatively give them $42,000 in benefits until they reach the age of 65, plus this year's $3,600 incentive. I know that the school system receives funds from multiple sources, but I surely hope the funds to support this are not coming from our city. If, and I must emphasize if because I do not know, these funds are coming out of our real estate taxes, then I have to ask council, why are you supporting or using taxpayers' monies to subsidize people for not working? Thank you again for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. There were a lot of ifs in there, and I know, I've noticed two school board members in attendance this evening. They might be glad to speak with you about that. Thank you.
Since I was a recipient of the, I speak from now.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Ms. Diana Williams?
I'm actually going to pass on some of what I need to say.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Peter Van Acker?
I think he got stepped up.
He departed. All right.
All right. That'll do it, sir. Great. Thank you. No other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Great. Thank you.